Good afternoon. This is the Thursday, March 3rd, 2016, meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. There are four members present today with one absent, absentee, and but a quorum has been established. If there's anyone who is intending to speak before the planning commission, could they just raise their right hand? And do you solemnly swear to tell the truth to the planning commission as you know it? Thank you very much. Disposition of minutes? Anything that anyone would like to point out?
I did review them. How do you actually call it? I think it was a grammatical error. I'm not sure what error. Does that date it in?
I can't remember the date. I can't remember the date. I think we sent it out yesterday.
Okay.
That's a bit of a paper. That's a very tall.
If there's no objections, I'll make a motion to accept the minute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For in favor or with one abstention? There are no cases before the planning commission today. There is however communications for Title 41 site plan review for 559 East State Street. And we have a gentleman that would you like to just come? Normally, we have the code enforcer kind of enforcement introduce what's going on, but you want to just go before the podium there and tell the planning commission what's happening?
Yeah, we have all the pretty documents and every like all the site map and everything. I don't know if they.
We have them.
Yeah, we have them.
Oh, you have pretty documents.
Yeah, we just need to get.
They're not that pretty, but.
Just maybe a brief description of what's going on with that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if you could.
It's a concept maybe would be.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
And just give your name and your address, please.
Yeah, Nick Muntin, 22 Briarwood. And yeah, no, the idea, I wish I had it with me as well. If you're familiar with the location, it's currently an impound lot and two very old masonry buildings there, kind of at the end of Park Drive on East State. And I have been in conversation with Nicholas now and for some time and looking to put what would be like probably about 15,000 square foot primarily medical arts building, but with some light retail. The idea, my dream at least, I've been talking with a couple of people to gauge interest in terms of prospective tenants would be kind of ever since Ray's Freeze left, whenever that was, like there hasn't been like a kind of like ice cream coffee shop hub kind of along along that end of the bike path. So to have something that would be sited like that, you know, and have something that would be providing, you know, coffee and ice cream and things like that for everybody in and out of the bike path. So but primarily medical, the medical practice and medical lab that I own that's currently kind of catty corner, Muntin Healthcare and Athens Medical Testing across from Bob Evans on the other side, we'd be moving over as well as there's a dentist and a couple other smaller tenants as well. So we'd primarily be Monday to Friday, nine to five, you know, type operations, you know. I can't imagine that if we were to get any, you know, coffee shop type place in there, it'd probably keep fairly similar hours. But and there's been a couple people interested, high-end running shoe store, which would be where they like scan your feet and then tell you what shoes you need. You don't pick them out. Apparently, it's a thing. I don't do a lot of running, but if you do, I guess that's what that's what you do now. So they're interested, you know, kind of a couple outfits like that. But adult daycare is also would be one of the primary anchor tenants. They really like the idea of the proximity to the community center and everything there. And since there isn't an adult daycare in Athens, that would be.
And you said this is on the site of the current medical.
No, this is, so this would be, this is currently if if you take Park Drive down and rather than go into the sewer treatment, you veer left there a little bit. It's currently gravel lot with like a fence and yeah, some few small structures there.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
This is where Themes used to be, where the towing company.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly, exactly. So.
I missed it. Were you demolishing the existing?
Yeah, we looked into it and it's just the two small masonry buildings are not very robust. And to try and build something around that would be. And the other thing as well is in this, I wish Paul were here today because one of the reasons we've been kind of taking so long to bring this before you guys is because it currently is, maybe this is a path we don't want to go down, currently is still in floodway rather than floodplain. I know under the new maps that FEMA has that will be coming out once everything with Nelsonville finally gets resolved, it will no longer be floodway but floodplain, but we are still building to floodway specs, which is to say it will be elevated six feet. So it will be like on piling, but I mean, they'll be cladding around it so it won't look like it's on stilts. But and on the site map there, the entry is.
You can have one.
Oh, I'm.
That's where I'm trying to offer you.
No.
I know.
Right.
I'm keeping my big one.
The.
No.
There wouldn't be any new fill brought in, but what would happen is like right in the, I guess that would be the northwestern corner there where the handicap parking is.
Okay.
We would be skimming a light amount of topsoil from the rest of the the site and grading that up because as you know, with the bike path, there's a hump currently, but to grade that up so that also that it would be just like even grade to the decking of the building right there. So so the piling effect wouldn't also be visible from that.
There's not a proposal to impact the bike way, is there?
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, 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 no. I'm saying, no, what I was saying is just that currently the bike, the bike path is, I guess this way is a hump.
Stairs.
And just to make it a bit more even so that people on it.
So ADA accessibility into the structure is going to be, you aren't doing grading or you are doing grading to bring it up?
It's a localized grading, just kind of on that.
That first part of the deck.
Right. It'll be, it'll be graded from the parking lot to that decking there. And then on the on the lower side, it would be stairs. Although we are actually considering, this is something Nicholas and I were kind of, when we were meeting with Paul last week, going back and forth about actually bringing the decking around and then ramping like for the for the southern side, bringing the decking around to the, what do I want to say, the short side of the building and ramping it down there. I guess Nicholas could speak better to this than I could. In terms of, it had to do with slope and offset, and there was going to be 120-foot ramp if they, so it was much easier to make it just even grade for the one side.
Sure, but and so there's there's entrance points on the north side of this building.
The idea is all the entrance points will be on the north side of the building.
And they'll be, they'll obviously be exit points along the south side of this building.
Emergency, emergency exit or staff exit only.
So under this design, as I'm looking at it again through an ADA lens, if there were some problem, i.e. a fire on the front side of this building, there really is no effective egress for someone in a wheelchair other than to be taking down those steps in the back, right?
Right, which is why I've been championing wrapping the decking around. That's, yeah, that's my understanding is, yeah.
I'm curious as to what your anticipated trip generation is. As you know, we're looking at this area because of the community center campus, as that may or indicates.
Right.
And possible farmer's market relocation along with the replacement of the pool.
Right.
So I'm curious as to what, if you have a known idea now of what the towing company actually generates in terms of vehicles? And and those I contend might be a lot of after hours, you know?
Right, right.
So versus what this may do and.
Yeah, yeah, I believe that the towing company, I believe, also is like very like cyclic, like event weekends and things like that, you know, it really kind of depends on, because I'm not sure, I'm not even sure where all they're contracted with. I don't know if that's like for going forward, I don't know if that would be a good benchmark for us.
True.
I mean, I think, I mean, based on like our present flow and knowing what the other tenants would look like, probably about 150, like unique visitors, if you want to include that, might be a family, you know, or an individual, but like unique vehicles, I would say, on a daily basis, but over the course of nine hours.
I guess I'm wondering, and we'll have to ask the city engineer, I see Nicholas showed up. I don't know if if we've even gotten to doing our internal review yet, where we go in public works. Yeah.
Mr. Bittner, did you want to come up to the podium?
Sure.
You can swear in.
Did I give you guys the pronouns?
We have small ones, except for me.
Yes, before that.
A little bigger than yours.
Nicholas, we do need to swear you in.
Okay.
So.
There should be enough.
And Mr. Bittner, if you'll just raise your right hand.
Okay.
And do you promise to tell the truth to the commission as you know it?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. And just if you would, just for the record, just state your name and the company you work for.
Okay. My name's Nicholas Bittner. I work with BET, Architects and Interior Designers here in Athens. I am the architect or helping project manage this beginning stage of the project.
I was just going to tell Scott.
Yeah, but to answer, I mean, I think at peak, we're sort of expecting about 30 cars that'd be basically at the beginning of the day and then at the end of the day, it's professional offices, mostly employees, be the peak hours, not.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 at the nine o'clock in the morning and yeah, yeah. And when I said 150 vehicles total, it was like the total number of vehicles throughout the course of the day.
Okay.
But it is kind of conjecture right now without knowing the full use and what these.
Basically, just off knowing that the traffic flow with my practice and the current parking and, you know, in the lab, since that would be 50% of the occupancy here, and I don't think the adult daycare looks to take up probably about a third of the building, and that's not going to be a significant amount of flow there. I mean, in terms of vehicle traffic, that's kind of, person gets dropped off and then, you know, picked up five hours later or something like that, so.
I didn't know, and I don't know if you know, Nicholas, how this roadway ever came into existence.
I didn't know.
The spur went in.
It's strange because it shows up in the easement for this property. And I, we didn't look to see, you know, what, like, for example, like the sewer treatment plant, which also uses that spur, if there was ever an easement for that site before, if it was always in the city.
There's a real crossing there. It wasn't lit, but it was a crossing.
Okay. Yeah, but I mean, it's described, the easement's described all the way back to East State Street, more or less. You know, I mean, it describes the easement you take to get to Park Drive and then all the way to State. So the easement with the property is to go all the way back to State that that has to remain a right of way to access it.
So the road, the road leading to it is not an acknowledged.
Yeah.
East Park Drive is not this.
East Park Drive is, but that little spur that comes off of it, I think there's like a elevation, like above sea level marker right there at that corner of that spur in the East State Street, something, it's right in the park off the Veterans Park.
Is that a permanent easement that's granted to the property?
Yeah.
Okay. Because the high university is in the process of divesting of some of their property down in that car use line as well.
Yeah, and there's no easement, like, for example, there is, it looks like the last time this property was sold to the motorsports company, that that easement was given to Hawking Conservancy to access their site to the, I guess that'd be the.
The West.
Yeah, West. So that was the only sort of change we were making. It was never actually a written easement. It was drawn on the survey by hand. So what we would be doing is having it written, and I think where it's drawn, we're showing it maybe slightly a little bit more to the north in its current location.
Are there initials on it where they drew on the on the map? Is it on the deed or is it on?
No, it was just.
Auditors.
It's on the, it's on the auditors. So that's where we found it. And it was, you know, it's a surveyor drawing, but then it's clearly, you know, handwritten easement. That was added. And it doesn't show up in the written documentation. I mean, I think our attitude was, well, we should make it a permanent thing if it's going to be there, but yeah, it was strange. And that we do, they do some mowing and some clear up of debris there from time to time. They do use that easement to access their property.
Paul said it was about once every five to 10 years.
Yeah, it's periodic, but it still seemed like need to be there.
I guess I was saying as far as trip generation also, that we'd like to have the city engineer review this and as a whole, because we're now just starting with the, just selected our design engineer for our East State Street improvements. And then we've got the farmer's market and then the pool and our community center campus review. So that may be something that's going to be required.
Okay.
The other issue that was brought up, the staff was addressing. That roadway is actually East Park Drive. There's some concern that if it remains as in East State Street as it is now.
Right.
That does not align with the emergency services response. And they've already indicated they've had some problems, believe it or not, for the hotel. So that's there in front.
Yeah, it is interesting to include like the city labs down there. There's also a city restroom that's down there, and those clearly have East Park Drive addresses to it.
Okay.
I'm glad that Service Safety Director brought that up because I, as I was looking at this too, I know, you know, listed on here is 599, but the community center is 700, and it's, it's just this funny jumping.
Yeah, we don't, I don't know where the address came from. Yeah. No, I don't think we had.
No.
I don't think the developer or or Nick had any interest in it having to be in East State Street addressed. That's not, I think it was just location wise.
Yeah.
Addresses can be really painful, so I'm just sharing with you. And, you know, of course, in your marketing, you can say just off East State Street, East Park Drive. But as, you know, if the farmer's market comes to place, they'll be on East Park Drive. I mean, it will just, it's starting to generate.
Yeah, I think it's something that they would want to see done before.
Before I get business cards and signs made. If you can do it before then, I'm good, I'm fine with it.
So maybe I'm getting too far in the weeds, but I am still curious as to occupancy of this plan. AML would be moving into this as well, or is this?
AM.
Athens Medical Lab?
Athens Medical Testing, the one that I, Athens Medical Lab as an entity no longer exists, it had been purchased by Opelinas years ago, and I unfortunately named mine too similarly. Athens Medical Testing, yeah, which is currently located right across from Bob Evans, would be moving in there. Yeah, yeah, as well as the medical practice that I own that's in the same building as Athens Medical Testing.
Mr. Bittner, there's 71 parking places, spaces, not counting disabled parking?
Yeah, so 75 total, once you include the disabled. And so that that number is based off of, if you look at under the code notes there for the construction or under the 41.09 use area table, based off Title 41. And so we're taking that 15,600. So the building total square foot is 16,800, but then we're taking off like mechanical rooms and kind of non-occupied spaces off of that to give us with the total actual use area of the 15,600. And then we're assuming the worst case scenario from a parking standpoint, which would be if that all that 15,600 turns into medical clinic. So that has the highest requirement for parking stalls per square foot. So for example, if there were offices that went in, professional office instead of a medical clinic, we wouldn't need that many parking spots, but we just want to make sure that it could be fully used if that's what they end up leasing.
What would they do with the available parking that wasn't being used? Would they try to rent that off or?
I think it would just be.
I don't think so. I think it's just.
Just less congested parking, yeah.
Yeah, because I know Nick does feel that they would be using that with his his practice, that if you look at the parking lot.
There are people who aren't truly handicapped, you know, like they don't have the handicap placard, but they have accessibility issues, you know, and like having them parked, stall the stall, the stall is just like not really conducive. So having breathing room there is important. But and, you know, and that was one consideration as well as knowing all the planning or all the considerations that have been going into the East Park Drive in terms of like, you know, like this is really 90% of everything that would be in here, I would think, would be just Monday through Friday. And that, you know, like if, you know, serving is like overflow for, if the farmer's market were to go in, you know, for the Saturdays, you know, like that's something, the other principal stakeholder and I, you know, we're 100%, you know, fine with, so long as like no, no snow chains or whatever on the, on the, on the snow tires. But no, that, I mean, yeah, we'd be fully willing to to support that because I think, I mean, just knowing what a struggle it's been for the farmer's market and everything. It seems like it would otherwise be a great spot. I know that the parking seems to be one of the limitations with the one spot there on Park Drive right now. So if that could be of any help, absolutely, we'd want to offer that to you guys.
That's nice of you, Doc. You weren't seeking that.
No, no, but it is, I mean, I do, I just, like, having grown up on the far east side and like ran or walked by this spot, like, it's always been with a term of dead cat space, you know, it's always been like, it's been like, well, it's a, it's a term of the architecture.
I've never heard. I didn't use it, okay?
The architecture firm I worked at in Baltimore, it was a term.
In that spirit of accommodation, could you triple the size of your restroom, Sam? I don't know. For the, for the.
Farmer's market?
For the farmer's market, yeah.
Well, that's, that's a whole different plan. You can tell.
I say, I say, park outside, nobody's going inside. No, but it's like, it's been kind of like a blighted space of, you know, and the, I just, you know, I mean, there've been good, good businesses in there, but just kind of an odd space into, I don't know, just to turn it into something that really kind of becomes like an anchor for that, that whole stretch of access to the bike path, which it seems like, you know, is the primary access for a lot of people and everything, I think just.
That's a good place for me to ask that question.
I'll follow.
The anchor idea. So if you proceed with this, with our blessing, what will be the consequence of this as it goes down the entire area, which is on the other side of what was the Linsler Road Tracks, which is now the bike path? I can see all kind of purchases of the divested university property. I can see this becoming probably an uncoordinated eyesore, whereas now it's green and the soccer fields are there. I know that's not your responsibility, but once it starts, how can we deny anyone else access to that land?
I guess I could speak to that. The university has indicated that they're willing to grant us a permanent easements for our bike way so that that would protect it, I believe.
Well, that wouldn't protect the area that would be sold that's on the riverside of the bike path.
I mean, to answer your question, Nancy, and how we were considering it was, we were really looking at kind of preserving that easement along the bike path. So that's why we wanted to put a lot of this sort of natural area up against that bike path as a little bit of a buffer. So we have, we're, you know, we're going to plant trees and kind of do if we have any need for retention. We don't really expect it because if you look there, it's pretty, it's a pretty shallow area along there. So that way, there's a little bit of a buffer between the bike path and the building. And then again, we, we're not going as far to the river. There is another whole allotment behind us that's owned by the Hawking Conservancy. So I mean, I think ideally.
That's perpetuity.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I think ideally you want to keep that that buffer along the river. So we're trying to kind of very clearly define a, if it's going to develop, it should, you know, basically face the bike path. It should, that should be sort of its front street, if you know what I mean, and then go on there. Now, if anybody actually follows our lead, you know, that we can't tell.
That's exactly what I was asking you, following this lead or following this move.
Well, it would be a question of access, though, right now, we think that's.
Exactly, that's what I was just asking.
Well, I guess that's what I'm taking.
And how can we deny them?
Well, I mean.
One thing, and if you look at how we, we tried to orient again the parking lot, was that if there was another sort of roadway that was developed, that it could, you know, conceivably be in this, this area behind here. So it's not like there'd be a road paralleling the bike path, which, you know.
Would that be desirable to have a roadway out by the end of the river?
Not, not for me, because I don't have a parking lot for my businesses. I mean.
I think the implications are that, you know, you have this new land where there's a lot of land hunger in town. When J&amp;M developed this site at about the time we were adopting the floodplain, it was the only one in the floodway, what used to be the floodway. Now we have a different reality, but I guess I'm concerned about it. You know, if you start, where does it end? I mean, if you don't grant them an easement, I mean, I think if you own land and it's landlocked, you purchased it, be simple, absolute from Ohio University, then, you know, what, where does it end?
Right.
I mean, can you understand, Nicholas, you've been around here long enough to know.
Yeah, no, I understand where you're coming. I mean, I think that's where we saw if there was going to be an easement, it would make sense if it would come off that part of this property, if it's, if it's coming from this direction.
Mm-hmm. And it gets to look at the, you know, if this hypothetical road would start on Athens Hilton Space, it could be right on, look at the back end of that whole mall there, just as the people driving into town will look at the back end of your building, right?
Well, it's all front end.
It's.
It's all tech is on. I'm sure it'll be just gorgeous. All right, so why aren't you putting, why aren't you putting parking under the building? Can we just?
The reason, we're not elevating it very high. So we're basically, to get above the flood is, would be 638.5.
The current flood estimate, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you don't know what the flood will be in the future.
Yeah.
I just read Five Days Memorial in which entity, a medical entity that was outside of the floodway was decimated. I mean, it's a hideous book, and I think that, you know, it's your, your choice, but.
No, we are.
I have.
We are raising that first floor above the 100-year flood elevation.
As estimated in 1973?
Yeah.
I thought the flood maps, which go back to what, 1913, hadn't shown that no actual water had displaced onto this.
Yeah.
Property since, for the past 103 years, since they started keeping.
That's correct.
How, you're saying you're absolutely sure of that? I mean, because the water was up to, was up to Walde's door several times.
But that was displacement because of?
Oh, well, okay, let's just talk about water. It's just as damn wet.
It's not getting into the place.
You know that? I mean, it's wet and it's destructive, however much it's there.
Right, but to answer your question, why we're not parking below the building is we're raising it up, but because the, the grounds are not, is not that extremely low, that elevation will only be about four to five feet above the grade. So it's, you know, maybe if we got to seven, eight feet, we could consider parking underneath it, but we didn't want to really raise the building up. The idea was that, so if you're going along the bike path, it truly would look like it's on that same elevation in the bike path. And that's the only section of the site that we're proposing bringing in fill, and we're not bringing it in from outside the site, it's from the site itself, that retention area. So we're going to fill in that drive entrance as you come in to allow the ADA spots to all be at pretty much grade with the building. And then it will just slope down there.
Just an ordinary, Nicholas, if you're just an ordinary old gimp like I am, you know, the knees and the, and the stairs, you know, because you bumped the knee the other day. I mean, I wonder about the design of this. I mean, I couldn't have, I could probably get a sticker, but I don't have one. I don't want one. I want to go, I just wonder about stairs. I wonder, the adult daycare, maybe I'll be ready for it by the time you get it going.
The stairs, we're only putting on that, the lower section. So the front section will all be accessible.
It's awfully complicated. Okay, last question, I guess. How about right next to the wastewater plant? I spend a lot of time at the library and I know wind goes from, blows from west to east in this town.
The smell test.
Yeah.
Oh, this was a multi-day, multi-sample, multi-participant scent test over.
Probably about a month and a half, I'd say.
Maybe it's not the right, it could not be the right month, but, you know, it stinks a lot.
It has improved, our, our data has shown.
$50 million does a wonderful thing, doesn't it? Or how many, 18?
15, 18.
Yeah, I know. That was one of the requirements that I put the ordinance through.
Thank you. Thank you. No, seriously, it does, it smells like, I mean, I just, like, anecdotally, just being where I am across from Bob Evans right now, like, just from this time of year to, compared to last, it smells way like, like in the evening time, it used to be six o'clock, it would waft that way. Doesn't happen anymore. And we were doing the, right on the site during the scent test, and there was, at times, it was not.
You get a whiff, but it wouldn't be consistent, let's put it that.
We do still have to, you know, the final end of the process turns to our sludge, and when, on those days when it's removed, there will be an odor. But I, I truly believe, I checked again this weekend, it's better.
Yeah, we, we actually found that in our testing, that it was always on the highway that the smell was worse. It seems like if, I don't know if it's prevailing winds or, it wouldn't make sense.
I think the orientation of the tanks, it's the tanks, the, the tanks that would smell are located highway side and not, not this. I mean, honestly, like, I wouldn't want, I would not want to put all my, all my medical facilities in this stinkiest spot in town. There was a big consideration, but like, even in talking with like the, the employees at the plant, you know, because they're, as they've described to me, they're, they're still getting the rhythm down. This is an entirely new process and apparatus, and, you know, they're saying, no, we're refining it, it's just like, it's a living, breathing thing, and, you know, I mean, like, it, it, technologically, they say it should be totally zero emission, they all admit that it's not quite there yet, but that it will be once, you know, probably by the time we have it here.
So you have been doing a sniff test, is what you're doing?
Oh, quite literally, yeah, yeah, no, like.
For how long, have you been doing that again?
We started in about mid-December. Once we, you know, they had a big opening, like, okay, it must be it, this is it, so let's start now. And then it went through, it was probably about mid-January or.
Yeah, like, yeah, January 7th, January 10th, so the three, three or four weekends. More than, what I noticed more than anything was, rather than an offensive odor, at times, and you kind of had to like, be looking for it, it was like a thickness to the air, which I guess was because that's like where they, where it's, it's already been treated and bleached, and it's just being allowed to, like, it's like the evap tanks, so it's bleached waste matter, and like, so there's a slight thickness to the air there, but it's not offensive. It's just, it's hard to describe.
It's not bleaching anymore. We just have to clarify that.
You weren't expecting this little research.
No chlorine, okay?
There's no chlorine.
No chlorine news.
If you smell chlorine, we're in trouble. But it is a little more organic kind of earth smell, and that's okay, right?
Yeah. Well, it's, it's not raw fecal matter. It's something way more palatable than that.
Yeah, they don't, won't notice it. So how are you going to regularize your promise to make this a nine-to-five operation?
I mean, or I guess the lab actually opens at 7:30 in the morning.
And, well, I mean, you're the one that said it, I didn't.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, probably, like, yeah, I mean, as I said, I mean, I don't know.
I meant, just what are you offering? Because we've, I mean, promises, promises.
Oh, seriously, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think our expectations are with the first leasing, it will be in that.
I mean, I can't imagine having a shoe, I'm sorry, Nicholas, I can't imagine having a shoe store that closes at five. I mean, that would, since a lot of people work, who use those kind of shoes, and I just.
But I guess, and if there is, I mean, it is, at this point, it's kind of, it's the, it's honestly, part in the horse, chicken in the egg, you know? I think if the medical individuals who are, have all expressed interest in this, you know, like, if this were to be approved, I think they would probably be filling up 90% of it, 95% of it right there, you know? But since we don't have signed leases, since we don't have, you know, a going concern quite yet, you know, we've, there've been contingency conversations and whatnot. I mean, my, for me, I, I'd do much better if there's a dentist next door to me than, you know, a shoe store.
Okay, so last question, I guess. Why, in your current facility, I know many people that go to yoga after hours, after five. So in other words, I, I think you better expand your timeline a bit, because, I mean, they're running yoga at nine, you know, seven, six, seven, eight.
Fair, and, and that's, yeah.
If they're going, migrating over there, then we're not talking about a nine-to-five operation or a 7:30 to five.
I guess when I say nine-to-five, I was thinking about like, people, like, at least three-quarters of the occupants, you know what I mean? Like, there might, like, a cafe or yoga, or yoga might.
The big parking, which would be 20.
Might, might have a bit that would be afterwards, but yeah, peak parking traffic would be, would be nine-to-five.
Mr. Bittner, could you also describe the lighting that would be used, especially like in the parking lot?
We're proposing using LED all down lighting, so it's just, it's the parking areas and not off the site. And we're going to put some lights on the building itself, too, especially along those, that front parlor and bike path.
You have some water line improvements to do?
What was that?
Do you have water line improvements to do with your?
We, we think we will. We got a little bit of preliminary information on that, if you go over to the, here we go. See on our small one here. Yeah, if you see the water line coming down the spur? That's what we're, we think we might need to size it up a little bit. We're, again, we're running all the calculations still, because the building will be sprinkled, so we just want to make sure we have the capacity first. It's a strange thing, because who's getting, you know, who's getting a drink of water when the sprinklers are operating, using the toilets? But you gotta size it for both its domestic and its sprinkler needs, so. We believe we're going to have to bring it down to, from that spot to get an act of decent size lawn.
Would there be sewer improvement as well?
Sewer, we're okay.
Yeah, it looks like that.
Looks like we have the capacity on the sewer.
Well, I mean, the city engineer will have to review this and.
Yeah. Well, I mean, from where that line is, I stay correct, the line goes underneath the park, so it's right.
It's from Hope Brezovar, right?
Yeah, it's on C-100.
We'll give you back a big one.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get, you guys get really big printout here. You don't want, is this, this side okay? So we got the sanitary coming off here.
I know.
And it goes through the park, and then the wa, here's that water coming down the spur. And we are proposing a, basically a storm, so if anything does fill into that retention area, that the storm will be moved into the, the natural flow, which would be towards the conservancy. But it wouldn't be all at once, it'd be similar to like what the situation is at the, where they redid Richland and put in the big retention.
We had a little glitch there, so that is not finalized there.
We're performing better.
It's not our best model right now, but it will be, should be.
We don't expect this one to fill anywhere to the capacity that that one does, either.
I mean, there's a lot of things, and we normally, you know, have a little more information provided to us internally, but as you know, we're in a little bit of change.
Yeah, we wanted to just do a preliminary, so that when you do have some time to review it on your own, and that you have a little bit more background, and then you can probably give us more pointed questions the next time we come in.
As far as accessible parking, I'll just say, Nancy, that I contend that the fronts of every building should all be accessible parking anymore, because I have a loved one that has the sticker, and they're, they're always taken. You know, the four, or five, or six, they're just not enough for our aging population.
Especially in a entity that's devoted to aging care. That's what I was, so, listen to that one.
Are there any other questions?
Of course, they will.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate your insight into this, and you'll be, when do you plan on coming back to the?
Well, we are, have submitted or are in the process of submitting this right now, so there's a possibility it may show up here when you meet again, or it will be the following year.
Okay, so does it matter that the Corps of Engineers has not revised the plant, the?
We, that, we went through that for, basically, our fall and winter was all about, can we go forward without getting?
Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
And how?
Because it's being built to floodway specifications, it doesn't have to go before FEMA for review, because, because Paul and everybody locally at code can, can show that it was being built to that with, basically would only need to go to FEMA or the Corps of Engineers if there was a variance of some sort that was being requested. But since Paul can demonstrate that everything's being done compliant with their floodway, that's, we're building to floodway, not floodplain, even though it's going to be floodplain as soon as, as soon as somebody signs off on a memo someplace. But regardless, I mean, it seemed like, well, it seemed like the prudent thing.
No, no, I mean, I just remember Nelsonville from the planning, Regional Planning Commission, so I'm playing, it's just that easy, huh? Somebody go sign it.